Good evening.
You're not on either.
I'm not either. Hello?
Good evening. We're gonna call this meeting to order. So, thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. There's gonna be some few ground rules when we have speakers. Speakers are going to be limited to three minutes. If several people talk on the same subject, that's fine. However, I would encourage you to find one person to speak on your behalf to keep this meeting moving. We will end tonight at 10:00 PM. Speakers will be finished by 9:45 because there will be some board action. There could be some board action to be completed before we leave tonight. And my goal is to have everyone out of here by 10:00 PM. Again, my name is Monica McHugh. I am the Chair of the Jackson County zoning Board. And so we will go ahead and start our meeting. So there's a few business items that we have to start. Do you wanna go ahead and call roll call?
Here.
Mike Bird?
Here.
Eva Rinaldi?
Here.
Tom Stewart?
Yes.
Monica McHugh?
Present.
Can we read the key?
Here.
Mike Bird?
Here again.
Can we get this mic turned on?
All right, have all the board members had a chance to review the draft that was sent out by Lori a week ago?
For a minute, structure conference.
Oh, yes, that's true. We need to approve the minutes of the September night meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or additions? If not, I will call for a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on the meeting minutes from last meeting? If not, I will go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? All right. Minutes have been approved. Great. Does anybody have any more discussion or addition to the ordinance?
Monica, I had a list to go down of things that we wanted to try to get in order. Okay, let's go ahead and start there. All right, we'll just start on page one. And Bjorn, could you go ahead and follow with the evidence?
Okay, right, there's page one. So I just wanted to point out some of the changes that have been made at the commission's direction. So, under applicant, we added the word developer to that. Owner, operator, or developer to other WICS. That developer was used throughout the ordinance, but it was not part of the definition anywhere. So under applicant, on page one, we have the word developer that was added into that language. At the direction of the zoning commission, we also added a definition for catastrophic failure. And were you guys all good with that definition?
Lori, it says catastrophic damage is not.
Excuse me?
So, yeah, you have on here catastrophic damage is not fair. Do we need to change it to failure?
No, damages is probably fine if that's where you guys wanna keep it. I apologize.
And then, yes, then?
Catastrophic damage works as WC dash S. Yes, let's do that.
Anything else there, guys? Sorry, so that's not consistent through all of us. Some of it has dashes and some of it doesn't. Are you all in or out?
I think we've learned them all out. I'll do another query on that. What about the ones that are the CWX? Is that okay to keep the hyphen in that one? Like?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm good with that. Okay. Yeah, if there's, there might be one or two that snuck in just because there was a space and I didn't, it didn't get caught when I created. So, are we ready to start?
So on Lori, I have a setback. It says the minimum required distance to property line. Should that say from the property line?
Okay, so you're on page, did you jump the page, Rich? Okay. So I did go ahead and leave a but the only other thing in front of it was just owner developer. And I just made a note here to just remind you guys that I did add developer into the definition under applicant. So now we're to where you were there, Mike, on the setbacks. So minimum required distance.
Let's say from the property.
From. So we're ready to go to page four? Okay. So, in section three, for citing and application approval requirements, we've added the language there after a required pre-application meeting with the Jackson County Board of Supervisors or their designated representative. So that has been added. Then the application, the applicant for the citing and construction of which shall file an application with the Jackson County zoning administrator. So basically, the only new language in there was the, after the required pre-application meeting. And that was language that I added. It wasn't a specific request from you guys?
We'd like to be able to read it too. There's something to keep it down.
Bjorn? What our IT guy just says, he doesn't have any control over the projector. Rich, do you have anything that can happen to clear that up? There is an issue with people not getting in on Zoom, you said? We have some, I can see. Right now, there's eight people on, so some aren't figuring it out. Isn't it better? All right, thanks, Bjorn. Okay, that's fine. All right. So, we need to just keep up because he doesn't know where I am and we'll make it work. So anyway, we talked about the new language there in section three. And we had talked about it before, and that point was brought up. So I wanted to make sure you guys were still good with, with keeping that. And I've learned that pre-application meetings, even for just regular zoning permits, is a big deal. And this shouldn't be any different. This should even be more important. Okay. So if we get down to number seven, the engineer's certificates as required in these supplemental standards. So that's gonna be down Bjorn. Hello? Is he in the right spot? Okay, because I can't see that far. The engineer's certificate as required in these supplemental standards, all required engineer specifications provided as part of this application process shall be reviewed by the Jackson County engineer to ensure documents are prepared, stamped, and signed by a duly licensed professional engineer under the laws of Iowa. So that was new language that was added after being reviewed by the county attorney's office. Those additional protections were needed. We're gonna go down to number fifteen. A detailed decommissioning plan shall, so what, most of this is new. Everything in, John, did you have a question? You good? So, most of this is new. The zoning commission asked for new language in the decommissioning plan. So we didn't have any really good examples, but this is where we ended up with. So if you wanna read it and tell me what your thoughts there are on number fifteen?
Lori, one of the things that
You're reminding?
Can you hear me? Okay, folks, John Keyes County pretty, Lori, I don't remember if we mentioned this during our meeting, but one of the things that came up when I was discussing this with other counties that have been through this process, and I coupled and actually had their cases booked before public courts on specific issues, is one of the lessons learned was on these decommissioning costs, it was suggested that the bond required be three times the amount of the projected decommissioning cost, sort of guard against unforeseen problems. You know, everything seems to go up in costs. I think one of the supervisors were telling me about this odd event where they had fire and blast all over a field, required expensive cleanup. So that was just something that was brought to my attention based on community.
Mission? So John, my question on that is, you know, if something could happen, costs could go up three, five, 10 times from the time use are put into place. If we have, I think if we have something from the Jackson County engineer's office telling them how much they have, will that be sufficient? Because, you know, if I remember from some of my earlier experiences with the decommissioning, a lot of companies already put a lot of dollars away. And I don't know if that's the case with with some of these companies. But if the engineer's office approves it, would that be sufficient? Or would that be something that they should have in their documentation when they go to look at these?
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying. Is that something our engineer's office will take into consideration? You certainly could do it that way. It was just something that was brought up to me. This is obviously a very specialized area of law, and I talk to attorneys that specialize in this. And that was just one of the things that was brought to my attention. So it may well be that's something that our engineer looks at and says, well, when they determine what's sufficient. That's a good point, Monica.
Yeah, I just have a concern with us saying it should be three times the amount, and then 15 years down the road, it's actually six times the amount. And, and that's my concern, to have something in writing now. And then we have the issue like what they had, I believe it was in Cedar County, with all the fiberglass all over the field. So that if we leave it in the hands of the Jackson County engineer who should have some, I guess, more engineering expertise than what we have.
May I add something just for consideration? In other language that we have under sound analysis, we have in there that it'll be reviewed every five years. We can also add that language to the decommissioning part for the bonding so that it is something that's reviewed on a regular, on a regular basis. Okay? Do you want me to go ahead and work on that?
Yes, let's, let's add something like that into it.
John, do you think that would suffice what you're, part of what you're thinking for right now?
Yeah, whatever you decide. I don't wanna be, I'm not a decision-making authority. I'll just help you craft the language of the decisions that you make.
Thank you. Every five years is what, what we're looking at. And then update the bond? Yeah, okay, update the bond. Okay. Like I said, I didn't find any really good language there. So I think we just input that immensely. We go down to number twenty. The applicant is responsible to reimburse the county for legal costing incurred by Jackson County during the application process. All fees and legal costs shall be received by the Jackson, by Jackson County before the issuance of a permit. This was also language that John, do you wanna explain?
Yeah, and I've actually I'm gonna propose tightening it up a little bit, Lori. So I think we're just gonna make sure it covers all legal costs that the county occurs as a result of enforcing the rights and obligations of the parties during the application process, the decommission process. And again, the reason for this language, and again, this is proposed by people who've been through the process, and the, the idea is that the county shouldn't suffer a legal cost detriment trying to enforce this. More importantly, and I'm not saying anyone would ever do this, but if ultimately the applicant's paying the costs, they do not have incentive to try to bury us in litigation. Again, not saying anyone would ever do this, but this sort of cuts that off because ultimately the applicant would be paying for it.
Okay, I
Lori?
Sorry.
Back to seventeen. We have a, begins with an A. Just take that out.
One more time, please.
Seventeen. Begins with an A period. That doesn't need to be there, does it?
It does not.
Okay.
Lori?
Yes, Sam?
I'm, I just circled these because I've seen quite a few, like like on, under A, two and three, on page four, you've got the names on one and the name on the next one. An address on one, and addresses on the other one.
So just make it match?
Yeah. On number seven, you've got, it's not actually a sentence, but it's ended in a period. The first engineer certification as required in these supplemental standards. It's just like a fragment. It's not actually
So just reword that?
Yeah, so it's in the sentence.
I can't say how many eyes we've had on this, and it's been a working document since the beginning, but any, yes, I'll
And then number twenty, we start out with quotation marks and like, I can't read the data.
Yeah, that was my next one.
We're ready to go down to section four under general requirements? And where are you looking? Okay, there should be a period after towers, where?
That was a mini draft that I sent you back.
Okay, yeah, there's, I got some from you and Christina, and I didn't touch the working draft at all. Because I wanted it to be just like it is, you guys, so, but, but I do have notes on all those. So we'll get down to lighting. Again, I added the word developer, or since the word developer was here, I just wanted to show you where that was was throughout the ordinance, and that's why it was important to add that to the definitions. Waste disposal.
Excuse me, back on number four again.
Okay, sorry.
Signage on line four, it says, of the WEX tower or the entrance to an enclosed enclosure fence. I think that should say, and the enclosure. It says the signage is only on the tower itself. Could be too late for emergency information. See, remember, Lori?
Yes, sir. So, name of the person to contact in case of emergencies shall be placed upon the base of a WEX tower or the entrance and just and there. Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Anything else there, you guys? Okay, now, waste disposal. We don't have, I just wanted to point this out, we don't have a time limit anywhere within this ordinance for disposal.
Lori, didn't we talk about this? We can still, we have an ordinance with on disposal.
You're talking like either a nuisance or which ordinance are we, I'm trying to think of which one it is. As far as cleanup of a property. If you're looking underneath nuisances, there's weren't that specific time limits. We don't have any specific time limits anywhere else that I can think of. It says a construction site has to be clear of debris within extra more days after completion or anything like that. Okay.
Does anybody on the board have a recommendation for that? I, I think we should put something.
What we do in section six, in section six, number two, letter B, we do say something planned shall not extend beyond 120 days from the event of the for that, for the catastrophic failure. And we see we got something about forty-five days.
A concentrated effort for cleanup must be notable within forty-five days. But that's just notable cleanup that they started making effort.
Yeah.
Isn't that just for decommissioning though?
Yeah.
So it needs to be, if they're gonna clean up, yeah.
That's catastrophic failure.
And we need to have something in there that addresses that they're gonna clean it up and still have a wind turbine on the site, right?
I'm just saying, that's, that's one of the time ways we do have listed. I don't know if that's the right thing.
And now, we've tried to stay away from reasonable, using words like that because they're subjective.
Yeah, it's very subjective. Does anybody on the board wanna make a motion to a certain amount of days that we wanna require them to?
I'll make a motion that we use forty-five days.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any other board discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor of adding forty-five days to cleanup of a waste disposal? Say aye. Any opposed? Same sign? All right, Lori, would you add that in? That must be cleaned up within forty-five days. And then I think we can take out the rest of, part of that time period within forty-five days. But I think we might wanna keep in applicable local, state, and federal regulations as well. Because there could be some of those regulations that would be part of that.
So, shall they be removed from the site within forty-five days as established by the Jackson County wind energy ordinance? Okay.
Forty-five days for what?
And then disposed of in accordance with applicable state, local state, and federal regulations. Okay?
Forty-five days, when, when supportive by day start?
Forty-five days would start as soon as the soon as, as soon as it would happen. So if they're changing oil or something like that, and they've got crates left over from that day, they've got forty-five days to remove it.
Day of the operation.
From the day of the operation, yes. Need a period after federal regulation.
So now, number eleven, I just made note, inserted a new word. Setback from any, any was added to that. And setback from any neighboring property line shall be no less than fifteen hundred feet. And then we took out some of the language there that was there previously, because previously, there was unless appropriate waivers have been received from a joint property owners that no time shall any part of wind turbine or megalological tower overhang in the joint property. So all that was removed. And
Lori, wait a minute. Page seven, your public right of way, setbacks for public right of way, railroad right of way, power lines and structures shall be shall be fifty, so I think that A and U needs to come out of there.
On the, on B? Yes.
Okay. Shouldn't it say no less than?
If you mean no less than.
Oh, yeah, shall be no less than fifteen hundred feet. Shall be no less than. All right.
I love that, that's one, no less than than in item number C.
Yeah, and C as well, no less than fifteen hundred feet.
Okay, I just, I have a note in here too. Below that, from, from me, just stating that the megalological towers, mid-towers are lower in height than WEX turbines and are monopole-type constructions secured with guy wires. Was it your intent, the zoning commission's intent, to restrict placement of mid-towers at the same distance of property lines as wind turbines? It's more restricted than cellphone towers and their similar type construction. And those setbacks are one-to-one. So, one, one times one type, height, times the total height of the tower. So, four hundred foot or three hundred foot, say three hundred foot cell tower.
Lori, sorry, can you please confirm which age? Lori, sorry, can you please confirm which page or number were that looking at?
Excuse me, that's under the the setbacks, number 11, number C.
On page seven, Mary. I think our intent was that the met towers should have the same setbacks as the wind turbines, but am I incorrect? Yeah, we want to keep everything consistent for that, so, yes, it was the same difference on those. Okay.
All right, so, below that, number 12, is sound analysis. Which, that whole section is brand-new language that was added by the zoning commission during our September 19 meeting. It, there was some old language there, but this cleaned up a lot of that that was there before, and added some clarity. Were you guys good with that?
That does work, Lori, that looks a lot better than what we had.
I agree. Okay, so, under safety, we didn't make any changes there. Shadow flicker. So, throughout that whole part of shadow flicker, number 14, down to G part of, well, actually, all the way through shadow flicker, I added ore structures that exist. Which pages I went on? Well, it's under number 14, my, I have notes on my page, so I'm not staying in line, what page is that?
Page number nine, can you give one? 14, shadow flicker.
So, ore structures was added in, like, every section of that except E. All the way down to I. The non-participating residents' ore structure is, is basically, we didn't have our structure.
We need some formatting on that paragraph, too, after I-
I was just looking at that.
I'll put a note there for one, and then I think yeah, I think J should come out, then I, then I think those are in parentheses around that as well, around J. No, it's, it's one underneath that, and then J should come out, and then you have a one and a two under J.
Oh, you're, that should go to one and two.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
Hey Lori, I had a shadow flicker there in A, I had a question about that, that you talk about structures that exist when you own or files for the application. So how long a period of time could it be from the time you file, they all file for an application and something actually gets built? What if somebody builds a house somewhere in between that time period, not realizing this is going on?
They'll know it's going on. They'll know it's going on.
Well, it doesn't say here anywhere, so that's why.
But, I mean, any if there's a turbine being built, it's not going to be a C.
But it's not being built yet, this is just under application.
Right, but at the same time, even before it gets to application, my understanding is that there's state and federal review, and they said they've even been held before it even gets to the county. And there's, like, one mile notifications of, of people within that, that they're required to notify.
So even if you sell a piece of property, any of those notifications should come from the buy, you know, from the seller to the buyer, they have to notify in that for real estate reasons. And so, because if not, they can be held in breach of contract.
I just wanted to clear it up.
Now, I guess we're ready to go to number five, section five, avoiding mitigation of damages to public infrastructure. My number one, I just added a word, after commercial WEX, I added the word site. So we added that, because that was missing. And we're going to get down to number six, I think that's on page 11. And that's on discontinuation, catastrophic failure, and decommissioning. So there's a a lot of language added in regards to the catastrophic failure in section one of, of that, part one. So, decommissioning plan not letting the anticipated means and cost of removing the C WEX at the end of their service, serviceable life upon becoming discontinued in use or the new languages in case of catastrophic failure. And then, also, I can see a period issue in here, the cost estimates shall be made by a professional engineer licensed in the state of Iowa. Remove the period, and remove, excuse me, and reviewed by the Jackson County Engineer for accuracy and potential errors and omissions in estimated cost. So that is also new language, that part there. And the plan shall also identify the financial resources or bonding that will be available to pay for the decommissioning and regular length of the C WEX and accessory facilities. So that was part of that is new also, and then, all number two is new. And that is all on the catastrophic failure.
Anybody have any comment on that, any additions with that?
The word inoperable, so I got that. Under number two, inoperable, that one word in both A and B. And over, on section one, decommission hyphenated, that not be, that not be hyphenated, then we're decommissioned. Where's the? Section six, number one. In the heading. Okay, so which is correct? No?
Number one, why, why is it 40? How far down is it, though?
There's more than that.
Yeah, but why only go down to 40?
That is pre-standard language. And I think they're built to be removed down to that level. Did you guys see a discussion on that?
I'm not a farmer, I grew up in a city, I don't only going down 40 feet affect the soil quality if you're planting on top of it or anything? Well, typically anymore, most people are no-tiller, they do till. Don't even come close to the 40 feet, I mean chisel plow is what.
It's not that.
No. Yeah, even with the subsoil, it's not that deep, so yeah, because I think most, yeah.
All right, so, were you guys good with the new number two language added for catastrophic failure? Because I know one of the things you guys did talk about was a concerted effort. Because in the catastrophic failure that you guys have been observing in Cedar County, there has not been that, from my understanding, and that was one of the things you guys wanted to avoid. And, oh, under two, there's a dash again, and then like, what, dash? Dash again in there. Are we allowed to just have Lori be able to make all grammatical changes throughout those four?
Almost has to be the motion.
Right, that's what I'm saying, are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, we, I mean, we can do that, because it doesn't substantially change the language. If we've got a substantial change, then we need a motion, but on grammatical things, we can go ahead and point them out.
I don't want to keep pointing them out like that. And just like, for example, on the page before, there's the letter S in the lettering. And so, if we can just have her make those changes. And when I do this, I'm going to send these out to you guys. I know I have some grammar police on my board, and I welcome them. You know, if I'm looking at. So, yes, and I, I do appreciate all this. And as a matter of fact, when we dropped down to number seven, Christine, I made a, I do have a writing here and, under wildlife monitoring and mitigation plan, which you'll make note that that language in section seven is all brand-new. Section seven, one, and two, that is what you guys chose to add during our September 9 meeting. And in number C part of that, I'm crossing off added with inflammation, implementation, excuse me. And just changing that to training shall be provided. That was your recommendation, Christine? Okay. Okay, just a period. And I thought I had noted a formatting issue, the next, in, in number two, part of that. And, are you guys good with the wildlife? Part of that? That was, remember, we took that from another counter.
On I, post-construction AVN and BAT fatality monitoring conducted by third-party licensed professionals for three years following completion? Do we want to have that every three years, or just once?
That's two years, guys?
I think we want it every three. But now it's just once after three years. Yeah, I think we wanted it every three years for that.
How do you want the words? And to continue every three years thereafter?
I think that's one that we need to have a motion a second on, because it substantially changes that.
But it doesn't, but, well-
It's the end result. It does, because the way it's written, it's three years after. If we want it every three years continuous, then that does substantially change it, so we would need a motion a second to change that to every three years.
And then, do you need to add language about if there is significant changes, or let's, you know, if there was a BAT fatalities that multiplied by 20%, what does that mean?
We would need to have something, so that's something that the board needs to discuss on that. So I'm open for discussions. And motion to change it in additional language.
Well, it's set a licensed third-party profession.
But I don't know who that would be.
Believe it or not, there are professionals in the BAT world and AVN world.
That professional, I guess, tells what we need to do, I don't know. Way beyond me.
I want to point out there there was additional language added that wasn't there before. In number C, and then I below that, baseline study of the AVN and BAT habitat within the project boundary and a two-mile perimeter outside the project boundary. It shall be conducted by a third-party licensed professional and, the new language is, and approved by the county, which should be approved by Jackson County.
One question, who is paying for that? I would not want the county to be responsible for that.
And number one, under that, the facility owner或operator shall submit the wildlife mitigation, monitoring mitigation plan to mitigate risk to AVN and BAT population during the construction, not operation of the project.
That before they're ongoing every three years thereafter?
We probably need to add something to that, and also.
Professional administered. I, I'm just saying, maybe we take advisement from that licensed professional that do the monitoring, and take under advisement is correction to the problem. I don't have a word, I think.
Are you making that motion, that we?
Sure, I'll make that motion, that we, if we enter that wording, I don't know how to correctly say it, but. but you use a third-party licensed professional that you had do it for every three years, whether it's the same guy, person, company, whatever, every year, it doesn't make any difference, I think, but whatever they find out, take their advisement and their, their administration called the process to correct it.
So shall take their advisement, shall take the recommendation to correct the issue.
And I guess it's cost of the owner.
Yeah, we need to add in there that the cost will be borne by the owner operator of the C wax.
That'd be my motion to figure that out, where?
Thank you. So we have the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
What's my mic? Second by Sandra. All in favor of adding that additional language? What, oh wait, you're right, I need any additional discussion?
I just wanted, I wanted to know what we're voting on again, can we have a little cleaned up? Did you get something written down there, Lori?
I, I do have something written down.
What are we voting on?
And I wanna see where did you want, where is this being split in?
I, in, in I.
Okay.
Post-construction avian and bat fatality monitoring conducted by third-party licensed professional for three years.
Like every three years.
So I said, post-construction avian and bat fatality monitoring conducted by third-party licensed professional for three years and every three years after that continuously. Take advisement as to what is correction of the problem. Now he is there. Correction to the problem would be implemented by the owner operator. Something like that, I don't know how to word it.
Can I tell you what I, can I have?
Yeah.
All right, so. Post-construction AVN and bat fatality monitoring conducted by a third-party licensed professional for three years following the completion of the project and continued every three years thereafter shall take the advisement for remedy by the third party with the cost to be covered by the operator. By the owner operator, owner operator, okay? Advisement for remedy by the third party with cost to be incurred by owner operator.
Any other board discussion on that motion?
Did you read that one more time, where? Just some new language or from the beginning? Okay, um. And for three years following completion of the project construction phase and to continue every three years thereafter. Owner, your operator, stick over the operator shall take the advisement for remedy by the third party with cost to be incurred by the owner operator.
Yeah.
Is there any other board discussion or questions or comments? If none, ask for approval of that motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same side? All right, motion carried.
All right, I see a number F, there needs to be a period at the end. And, and two, that number F there at the bottom, number two, under the wildlife monitoring mitigation plan, anyway. That number F just seems to sit out there for.
I was gonna ask about that as well, the quality control and mitigation procedures. Um, I know that was in one of the one of the other boards or one of the other counties that we were looking at.
This, yeah, this was copied from that.
Yeah, um. And it doesn't have any context, and I don't know why, um, is that something that we'd like to see removed or changed? I'm open for discussion and, and comment from the board.
Take it, take it out.
Are you making?
I'll make a motion, take it out. I'll make the motion that we take it out.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other board discussion concerning letter F? Great, seeing no other discussion, let's go ahead and vote. Uh, we're voting to remove the quality control and mitigation pro- procedures. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion carried. Lori, let's go ahead and strike that.
All right. And for the record, just to be clear, we're, you guys just voted to remove both words, quality control and mitigation procedure and did not vote eliminate quality control mitigation procedures.
Correct.
That is correct, just that. Letter F in there.
Just the word.
We're just taking the word.
I understand, I wanna make sure everyone understands.
Okay.
Okay, now we're ready to go to section eight, the non-conver- non-commercial wax. Um, I do see number B, that color needs to be changed. We tried, we couldn't get it moved, so that's why that has still sitting there, you guys. And then I also wanted to just point out in the underneath sound. So that's under B C. I highlighted, um, down in the middle of that paragraph, measured at the exterior of potentially affected existing residents or from inhabited structure over hundred forty-four square feet that are currently occupied by human livestock. And my thought was that that should be struck be- cause we had talked before about the, the sound is to be measured. We need to go back to C and gather because we were talking about sound being measured in the property line.
We were talking about that.
So I think we need to look at, um, well, that was with, when it came to the commercial, so how are we gonna do, um, do that with non-commercial wax and also I'm gonna throw something up here. Egg exempt. Egg exempt. So first of all, if it's being used on the farm, they don't have to get a permit. They're exempt from setbacks. They're exempt from the bulk of our ordinance. If it's a non-commercial farm use turbine, that one, that's not gonna apply to egg exempt, farm exempt. Am I, can I stand that right, John? Mr. Peace?
Yes, yep.
I waited for you to put candy in your mouth.
Sorry.
So we have, so, okay. So if a farmer chooses to put up a non-commercial wax on their property must be less than a hundred feet. It is exempt. Correct, because it falls under the egg exemptions. And John?
Talking about the setbacks?
He's talking about, go ahead, John.
You're talking about the setbacks.
Yeah.
Yeah, my understanding, it's, uh, the same for our, our building, a building, farmers can go right up to the property line, everyone else has to be back where the fifteen feet. And so, so yeah. That's, uh, that's, that's part of our Iowa law.
Okay, so Monica, you had mentioned a hundred foot tall, non-commercial wets, so a personal use, it's a hundred foot tall. Um, so people that are down in a hole, they could actually might need a hundred and twenty-foot tower. So John, we, they wouldn't have to adhere to that a hundred and twenty-foot um, tower height neither would they.
Wait. Say that again.
So if we had a hundred foot height restriction, they don't have to adhere to the hundred foot height restriction then either, do they?
I don't know, I don't know if that's necessarily true, you're talking about setbacks.
Well, I'm not a windmill lawyer. So that's something I can look into, it, it's, it, how is it regulated? How high can you build something? There's all kinds of regulations, as we know. If, if, I've never had this happen, but somebody in Jackson County wants to build a windmill right up to somebody's property line, I assume um, there's all sorts of silo out of, that people could, uh, avail themselves of nuisance ordinance so that they can make silos, so. Um, but is that the exempt from our ordinance? That's my understanding. So I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of federal regulations and maybe some state regulations I'm not aware of. Uh, that's something I know into. I know a lot of people that are very smart.
I think it's probably something that we should because I don't, I mean, there could be farmers out there that would build a non-commercial one to help with their electric or even be off the grid. Um. And I mean, it, it, it does happen, I mean, we've.
So what's the technical definition of a farm, the farm use? How many acres, what we do with the land, that's. I mean, could you have two acres and a big garden and call it?
No, there, there's certain restrictions on the size of the farm, and I don't remember, I mean, the the IRS looks like a ten-acre farm. However, I don't remember, I don't, ours is ten, isn't it? I forty, forty.
And, um, there's a certain word and a group of words in there about, um, primarily used in production of of livestock or commodities or something like that that's about, so it wouldn't be like forty acres of of timber or brush ground, it would be forty acres of active agricultural production.
You know, John, what does the Iowa law say about a farm? Do you know offhand on what the what the state of Iowa looks like for a farm?
What constitutes? You mean what constitutes a farm?
What's the, what's their, what is the Iowa legal definition of a farm?
Off the top of my head, I think Lori's probably right on, it's forty acres or more, uh, the primary, um, income on the property is, yes, farming, egg related. I think that's it. I mean, it could be, it could be woodland if you're pasturing the help. That sort of thing, so, um, different definitions are slightly different if you're, you know, for income tax purposes, but for these purposes, yeah, that's my understanding of it.
So getting back to the, then the question about changing the the sound, um, the setbacks measured at the exterior of a of a residence or property line is where we started digressing from here.
So we have right now inhabited dwelling that I think our intent has been the property line. But with this, since we have it in inhabited dwelling, this would require a motion, a second and a vote, uh, to change this.
I'm going to, we changed it, change it to, um, property lines.
I'll second. I'll second.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Uh, board discussion on changing inhabited dwelling to property line.
We're still leaving on their ten percent tower height and all that stuff.
Yeah, this just changes.
Okay.
Is that going to have permanently struck? Or just occupied?
As we had talked before about, wait, was, this is just, all we're, all we have in there is inhabited dwelling. Changing that to property line, so nothing on the structures yet.
Do we wanna, do you wanna cover it all at the same time from?
Um, well, we've got a motion to change inhabited dwelling in a second. We'd have to withdraw that motion to go on. All right, no other discussion, all in favor of changing inhabited dwelling to property line? Say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, I'll go ahead and change, motion carry it to change inhabited dwelling to property line.
I'm trying to find inhabited dwelling. Okay, because I have affected existing residents or from inhabited structures over a hundred and forty-four square feet that are permanently occupied by humans or livestock.
That part right there.
Well, that's in number, under sound, number um, C. So that I should just say measured at property lines? That is what I would think would be the most effective.
Yeah, measured at property lines.
Is that the only other place that's a problem?
No, that's fine, no. Also, um, did you just want me to check just to make sure it matches pretty much what we're using for the commercial side of it, um, that type of language?
I think we need a motion on this one too, you wanna?
Yeah.
Then I would move that, uh, we would substitute the words closest neighboring inhabited dwelling with measured at the property line.
All right, I have a motion on the table, do I have a second? All right, mic seconds. So the motion on the table is change in section C sound, uh, I think it's the seventh line, uh, sixth line, ambient sound level shall be measured at the property line, period. We remove the rest of that. Do we have any board discussion on that? All right, seeing no more discussion, I will ask for a vote, all in favor of changing that sentence, say aye. Any opposed, same motion? Same sign? All right, motion carries.
All right, and then further in, you gave me permission to look at the other language to match it, okay? Or even? Uh, the only basically, um, under penalty number twelve, um, the wrong ordinance was there before, we were using two eighty-one or two eighty-three. It should be number two eighty-two, that's the penal, um, yeah, it's corrected from two eighty-one. Um, two eighty-two is the correct ordinance number for penalties. Okay, so we also had some other things that have, have come up in the meantime, and I know Monica, um, there's been, I've sent to the board, um, and the commission a resolution from the city of Miles asking for a buffer around their town. A resolution from the city of Miles asking for a buffer around their town. And there's been talk, um, city of Preston. We've also had emails that I've sent to you from their city clerk. Um, requesting a buffer. I haven't received anything showing a resolution from the city of Preston. I know I've had um. A conversation with the city manager in Macocheta who had mentioned, you know, there was some talk about it, but I haven't seen anything official. From them either. Um. So I don't know if you want to talk about this right now or um, one of the, go ahead.
Yeah, I, yeah, I do. It, this is one that I understand where the cities are coming from. My concern with adding that into this ordinance. When we have not added it into any others. Um, and John, did, I didn't see an answer back. If a city, I know some cities have the. Uh, is it all based on comprehensive plan? This is what I don't remember. So we do have three cities within the, within Jackson County. That if there is a development within two miles of the property, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, on this. The county needs to contact the city and work with the city to say, hey, there's a development going in. It's within two miles. And that is already on the books to notify, and that it's Preston, Macocheta, and Bellevue. And I think, is that because they have a comprehensive plan?
That was my understanding and it's about development. Um, it's, it's protecting. Or giving them still that room to grow. And actually, it's, um, we don't have to reach out to them, the developer's responsibility. So anyone even doing a split, so if you had a, a twelve acre tract, you were going to cut it down into a. An eight and a four acre tract, that would have to be, if you were within two miles of one of those towns. They would have to sign off on, on that plat. So it's, it's even as. Start, start splitting off a, a parcel, not just necessarily a subdivision.
Subdivision. So my concern on adding it into this one. Um, I, I've got a couple of them. So. Can the cities automatically put a resolution out? To notify the county and developers that they are requiring notification when something goes on. And that's number one. Um. Because I, I have a difficult time forcing people to do something on just one. On one ordinance that's out there. And I know Tom and I had this discussion on some other ordinances. Where we have been split on that requirement. You're still my favorite, Tom. So my concern is if we put it in this ordinance and don't put it in any other ones, especially, I mean, we tackle solar next. What's the legal ramifications if we put it into one? Or is this something that the cities can do on their own and put a resolution? That if a wind uh, ordinance is out there, can they do that on their own? John, do you have any idea on that?
Monica, uh, as you know, we have different um. Different city councils and mayors are all elected officials with the people in those municipalities. And the first thing I do whenever we have a conflict, a potential conflict between a county zoning ordinance or. And a concern of the city is I contact that city attorney and we discuss it. And ultimately, we start talking. To uh, our elected officials and we work those things out. Uh, and that's the way we've done it in, in, in every single case. Uh, I think the answer you're looking for is when push came to shove, who would win? And that is the stuff that court cases are made out of. And so, and ultimately, that's never where we want to go. So uh, we've always been pretty good with working with our elected officials within the county, be it municipalities or supervisors. So. I, I honestly don't think that that's going to be a problem. You could pass a resolution for just about anything. You know, I mean. You understand what I'm saying? The question is, what's the legal effect of, of, you're saying if a, if a city. Ordinance conflicts with a county ordinance, who would win in that? I can get an opinion for you on that. Uh, that's not something that I just want to. Uh, just throw out here off the top of my head. That's something that I want to research.
And, and I'm fine with that. I think it would. Obviously, the project before it goes into effect has to go before the board of supervisors. And I guess I would encourage the board of supervisors, especially if there's a project like this within. Uh, two miles of a city, I would encourage the board to contact the city. I'm hesitant to actually add it to the ordinance. It's like John said, I think the county works very well with the cities. And if a project has to go before the board, I think they would be more than willing and, and kind of do it on precedence. I don't know, what, what's some of the other board members? Opinions on this?
I would suggest. I would suggest if John is willing to research it. Maybe wait until we hear what legally can and can't be done.
And you're just talking about the miles ordinance, right?
Well, the, the miles ordinance, but. Obviously, like um, we already have agreements with Macocheta, Bellevue, and, and Preston. But you know, like if we have, we've got Andrew, uh, Spring Brook, Springfield, Baldwin, Monmouth. You know, what's, what's the, you know, do they have any of that? Um, but I, I guess I would kind of like an opinion on uh, the one with Miles. Yeah, Miles is asking for three in that too.
No, that's by resolution.
What?
Was it by resolution?
Yeah, by resolution. Well, that, yeah, I, I would like something on that. Um, I know we've had some other discussions and things like that. And um, one of the things that when the board of supervisors put in the mo- um. The first moratorium on the wind energy, one of the things that they discussed was the um. The scenic byways. And I think that this is a discussion that we need to have as far as looking at. Our scenic byways. We have a national scenic byway, which is Highway fifty two. It runs, runs along the Mississippi River. We also have uh, Highway sixty four, which is the state scenic byway, which is the Grant Wood by uh, scenic byway, and it starts at Andrew. And goes like the lead pass Monticello over to um, over to Animal Sound. Is that something the, the board's first, the board supervisors' first moratorium? Discuss those byways. Is this something that we want to look at adding? And Lori hasn't pulled up on the map.
Um, it, it shows where it comes in, um, at Monmouth on Highway sixty four.
Right.
And comes into Macocheta, goes up Highway sixty two. But then it's kind of a loop there. And you can go to the west and go up S Gate. Come in E seventeen, or you can take um, Highway sixty one up to E seventeen, or excuse me, sixty two up to E seventeen. But it would um, go through Monmouth, Baldwin, um. Vander, Spraybrook, and then actually ends just south of Bellevue. That's the Grant, um, Grant Wood scenic byway. And um, one of the talks is people come to our areas to, to. Partake in that. And then Highway fifty two, Highway sixty seven, coming in from Clinton County, going all the way to Dubuque County. That is part of a national scenic byway. And. Do people, I mean, if we're trying to protect the beauty, the views of Jackson County. Part of it would be to protect our scenic byways. And would a two mile buffer? On each side of that scenic byway be out of line? Would that be something the board would want to con? The commission would want to consider is add in that buffer around those scenic byways?
Yeah. Excuse me. I would be in favor of that. Um, we've talked about this in the past with previous commissions. Been on here a while. And yeah, don't laugh too much. Um. And so, and we've talked about this, and I would be strongly in favor of putting some kind of buffer to protect the uh, scenic byways.
Is that something that the board would like to do? If it is, then I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris, and second by Tom. Any more board discussion on that?
So that's on the national and the state. See, I would be on the national and the state because Highway fifty two. Is on the national and, and uh, sixty four and the, the looper on the state. The state and county. Is two miles, no?
I, I think two miles on each side. Side. So four miles in total.
Is there any language in other ordinances that address this? I have not seen any.
The reason that I brought it up is because the board of supervisors actually had something in the first moratorium discussing it. And like Tom said, we've had. Other discussions on the scenic byway. Um, the Grant Wood scenic byway is actually pushed in the Iowa Department of Tourism. Is, is a scenic route. There, they heavily advertise those.
I'm going to withdraw my motion on that instance.
Okay?
I'll withdraw my second if you're going to make a.
Do we, did the supervisors have any thoughts on that from your previous discussions?
So, Mike Stein is Jackson County Board Chair. Um, so again, we've, we've been. And that's our position right here, right now. This is the zoning board decision to present to us. And we've been gathering information for, again, you guys have been working on this since September of twenty three, I believe. And first of all, I would like to thank the board. They work extremely, or the commission, I guess it is, right?
Yeah.
Want to thank the commission. They worked extremely hard on this, and I think we should show our appreciation. I mean, they've been dissecting this thing for a long time. And, and as I said, we've been gathering. Information and gathering information, and trust me, there's been a lot of it. Um, we need to be fair to everyone that's concerned. Uh, we certainly want to sustain our quality of life and our natural resources. Um, we also need to be very respectful of land ownership. So there's a fine line to draw there. So again, and for us, for me to come personally to a conclusion, and. My counterparts are, are free to speak also. Um, again, we're still gathering a lot of information. When, when we talk about the scenic byway, I would say, yeah, it's a great idea to have a buffer around that. But then you also really have to consider our other natural resources that cost us a fair amount of money. But nobody else had. We have a North Fork, a South Fork, in Mississippi. Um, there's a lobster cactus over there. But we have a lot of tributaries, you know, that we need to consider. How do we protect them, you know? So um, yeah, yeah, again, there's a lot of information to be gathered, but yeah, myself personally, I would say, yeah, you need to consider that.
Just to add, Mike, um, that buffer, like you were talking about wood adding protections for the river all the way north and south. And um, just looking at that route that the scenic, the Grant Wood scenic byway goes. You'd be putting a big buffer around um. A lot of those watersheds that flow into the Macocheta watershed.
Yeah, there's several watersheds within the county. I mean, there's Farmers Creek. I think that was the first one they did. Um, you got several watersheds that I knew, and I think you do as well, John, don't you? You got some.
Sorry, is there a question there?
No. This John, sorry, the other John. I'll have to, John M.
I move that we have a five mile buffer on each side of the scenic byway.
I'll second.
There's a motion, all right, second for five miles around each uh, byway. Uh, board discussion. Um. This is what I am really torn on. I, I think five miles on each side is too much. Uh, and the reason that I say that. Is because we have some protections in the ordinance right now. That requires the uh, project. Um, manager, the, the owner of the wind turbines. That they shall follow um. The recommendations by the uh. Uh, Corps of Engineers and the Iowa D N R. And some of those include, is it two mile? Around Eagle's Nest, is it? It's five miles.
Currently, um, there's some talk that. There could be some changes with, with the state. Theirs is five.
Okay, that's right.
The federal wildlife, I think is like five or six hundred feet. But of course, we'd be looking at whatever the most restrictive is at the time.
Right.
Um, however, we may not, just a conversation I had with um, state D N R. We may not have those to fall back on. So if, if you guys are looking for, for something. I don't know if we can rely on, on their recommendations.
Because if we defer to them. Change it, we're still deferring to them. And, and that's true, but the other part of it is if we put things that are so restrictive out there. The state law still comes back and supersedes what the county does. What is the state law? Right now, they don't have one other than the D N R, you know, putting the, the five miles. And which is, you know, what they say. I mean, I have, I have an eagle's nest on my road. So that puts a five mile buffer in. The very northern end of the county.
But that's just suggested and recommended. It's not qualified.
That, that's true, but I'm hoping this pushes the D N R to decide what they're going to do. The more of these that we put in, the more it forces the state. Agencies to come forward, which we've requested that they come to in person. A zoning board meeting. They refuse to do so.
Keep in mind, you guys have a shall written in the wildlife monitoring mitigation plan, shall follow. Any recommendations and regulations by federal and state wildlife authorities.
My contention is that they can change that.
I agree.
So they can make it, you know, so it's like five feet from your eagle's nest. I know they won't, but the Corps of Engineers, I mean. the Corps of Engineers, I mean, we've seen how slowly they work, or women how quickly. I mean, we're not, um, and they've got, is, don't they have a two mile? Lori, I don't remember now.
I don't know that I've seen anything from Corps of Engineers. I know I've seen Iowa DNR and I've been told of, of federal of wildlife, but I, but I think theirs is as strong as the state's recommendations. But at least the federal's are requirements.
Yes, right now we have the motion for five miles on each side. Yes, she seconded it. Is there any other board discussion on five miles?
Can, can you guys, can we clarify if that is from the centerline of the roadway or from the edge easement?
I'm in state centerline of the roadway. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other board discussion? All right, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote. I, on this one, I want to call a roll call vote. And Becca, go ahead and call me last.
John Manson?
Is this motion to approve the five mile radius?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Mike Burke?
No.
Sandra Gerla?
Yes.
Um, Stewart?
Yes.
Christine Cobb?
Yes.
Emma Reddick Key?
Yes.
Monica Minku?
No.
The motion carries five to seven. So we will add in there five miles from the centerline. Or five to two. Whoops, sorry, five to two. Five to two, uh, motion carries. So we will add from the centerline of the scenic byway the national and state scenic byways. We will add that into the ordinance. Hi, is there any? If we want to add that in, if we want to do a three mile, with the, if you would like to make a motion on that one, they, they made a request to us to do that for three miles. We don't have to do anything with that. Uh, but we certainly can add something in if somebody wants to make a motion on that. Is there any other changes or additions that any of the board would like to discuss on that? All right, if not, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call for a ten minute break. And we will come back, we will open the public hearing and discussion from the, from the, uh, public. So we'll be back here at seven forty-five. Starting. We're gonna open the meeting to public comments and we're going to allow three minutes only. We have a timer up here. And I am going to ask for some decorum. So I want people from both sides to be able to speak tonight without any, any retribution. So if we have somebody who is in favor of windmills, of the turbines, I don't want any comments coming out of the off, out from the audience. If you are disruptive, I will ask that you be removed. I want people to be able to be heard tonight. So that is the, uh, the rules for this evening. They're gonna have three minutes. And like I said before, I would prefer that we have one or two speakers on a certain topic uh, so that we donate up all the time because we are going to close public comments. I'm hoping by nine forty-five at the very latest uh, so that the board can continue and finalize the meeting tonight. So Lori, do you want to go ahead and start with people to come up and speak? And, uh, as soon as they come up and begin speaking, we will start a timer.
So what I'm gonna do is just call out the names of those who have signed up to speak. And we'll have you guys seated up front. That way, when one speaker's done, we can roll right into the next. We're not waiting for people to come up. So when you call, when I call your name, please come take a seat in the front row. Or if we spill into the second row, please. So Brenda Teddy, Michelle Braswell, Jen Coach, Ally Kilber, Alyssa Roar, Marty Morell, Quinn Richardson, Jim Taffman, Tim Sheehan, Ron Besch, and I believe Mark Braswell. What, excuse me, no, that wasn't, no, I apologize. Um, Dory Venema, Mary Bartles, Brian, and I can't read the other name, uh, Brian McLeod, Bill Getler, Richard Sharar, Kristen Goldblum. And I believe I've covered everybody on the list that has put a yes by no need to speak. I'll restart with Brenda. There's a mic stand over there.
Hi, I'm Brenda Teddy with the City of Miles and last Wednesday, they approved a resolution for a three mile radius. And we would like you to consider that just for the future development of miles. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Braswell.
My name, my name is Michelle Braswell and I live in Clinton County. I went to school with some of your kids and I graduated from McHokata on this very stage. Jackson County is the envy of the entire state. There was a company here that put up a met tower without permission and you fought it. Now you get to make your own rules. Although your choices are difficult, your position is desirable. Clinton County was in a similar situation sixteen years ago when three companies were scouting the area. The county did the same thing, formed an ordinance as a protective measure. Ben, do you remember what happened in our country? The recession hit. The wind projects did not materialize. Now it is difficult to find any information on those three companies. I live ten miles from this auditorium. My neighbor Dennis Castello has signed an agreement to have possibly the largest wind turbines in Iowa on his property. His grounds touches ours on three sides. When you have to sit down with your spouse to discuss if and when you will leave your dream farm, that's when the situation is very real. I'm here tonight offering the perspective of a non-participating landowner. At a meeting when a person came up to me asking me questions, I did not even know that person was with the wind company. That's how sneaky they are and how naive I was. The following meeting, they told me they researched me. They recited where I went to college and what I studied. These companies will find your Dennis Castellos, who have a lot of plans and aren't on social media. They will find your absentee landowners like Supervisor Vance Serp, who does not live anywhere near the lands they want to sign up. They will repeatedly find your elderly when they are home alone. They may pressure them to sign an agreement on the spot. And when they sense resistance, they'll bring in the paid lobbyists. They can ignore your questions, spy, steal your photos, and write untrue blogs. In May, you scolded us for not speaking up sooner. So we did parades, we did fare booths. You may have seen the yellow signs. Our United Facebook Group Against Turbines has nearly two thousand members. That's one of the biggest in the state. This battle has personally cost me thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours of my time. If I can do anything to save another mom from this nightmare, I will do it. Jackson County, you are too smart for this. Write your ordinance to be so restrictive that none come in or stay in a permanent moratorium and gather data. It has been the biggest challenge of my life to try and change Clinton County's ordinance. I beg you, don't even go down this road. Don't do it. And?
This, three minutes is up. Thank you very much.
Next, Jen Coach.
If you can hold your applause until everybody is done.
I'm taller. Hi, my name is Jen Coach and I'm a Jackson County landowner who is concerned with certain aspects of the current ordinance draft. I wish to focus on the detrimental impact of environmental noise, audible and inaudible, such as turbine noise, which can and does cause adverse health effects. Besides audible annoyance, I urge you to consider the inaudible annoyance from barometric pressurized pulsation, such as infrasound. This low frequency affects our bodies at a cellular level and leads to serious cardiovascular issues and significant sleep disturbance, which contributes to early onset dementia, Alzheimer's disease, and can lead to hypertension and ischemic heart disease. The World Health Organization in twenty-eleven declared that high levels of annoyance caused by environmental noise should be considered an environmental health burden with costs to humans. In twenty-nineteen, Matthias Spazner, MD PhD, who is considered a world leader on health effects from environmental noise, stresses that none of the wind noise guidelines from the World Health Organization found an absence of risk. We are now in an era of science where the knowledge collected so far is sufficient to take preventative measures and require appropriate setbacks and noise regulations around industrial wind turbines. There's a clause within the easement agreement that a few Jackson County landowners have signed where the landowners have to forfeit their rights to complain about a serious physical complications. Those include headaches, tinnitus, sleep disorders, health, health, heart palpitations, nausea, dizziness, disorientation, excess annoyance, and vibrational effects and much more. The trust in any wind energy proponents assures us that there is no credible evidence that industrial wind turbines cause harm is blatantly disrespectful, unprofessional, and grossly irresponsible. You have the incredible and rare opportunity to encourage strict regulations around noise within the Jackson County wind ordinance. Enter Sound has been tracked as far as eight miles away from a wind turbine. So there's ample evidence to support the need for significantly greater setbacks from dwellings and distinct specifications for sound testing allotted noise levels. It is our right to request a fair and responsible wind ordinance that will protect the citizens of Jackson County. If you choose not to make any adjustments to the current draft, then you will be encouraging this county to promote reckless development with short-stated gains, most of which won't even benefit the county. Additionally, there is the risk that Jackson County will be vulnerable to an unprecedented lawsuit from nefarious wind developers who bully their way into the community to surprise the coun- country. Please take some time to reflect on what I've shared tonight and examine the ordinance draft once more to assess the need for further improvements. At the end of the day, we're all on the same team. I'm here for what's right for Jackson County and our community's health and willing. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance.
Ally Kilber?
I'd like to read an excerpt from.
Close, I'm gonna be close.
Thank you.
No, just closer.
I'd like to read an excerpt from a very recent article involving Next Era, a Florida-based company that wants to put industrial wind turbines in Clinton and Jackson County. The Minnesota Public Utilities Commission met on September fifth, twenty-twenty-four, and ordered an out-of-state wind power developer to live up to its commitment to remove a field full of abandoned wind turbine blades from southern Minnesota. About five years ago, Excel Energy decided to redevelop an existing one hundred megawatt wind farm in Maurer County. The existing wind turbines were dismantled and the used blades were dumped in a nearby field awaiting shipment to an out-of-state recycling facility. What followed was a four-year-long game of corporate pass above as a series of companies went out of business. The local utility, Excel Energy, contracted with the Florida-based developer Next Era to rebuild the wind farm. Next Era hired Spain-based Siemens Gamesmat to recycle the blades. Siemens then hired Ohio-based Rivercat Ventures, now defunct for the job. Now Rivercat's successor, Hannibal, is reportedly defunct as well. Hannibal's successor, Noble Winds, apparently disavows the project. Excel Energy owns the wind farm after buying it from Next Era, but Excel said it couldn't step in because it didn't own the discarded turbine blades. On September fifth, Next Era said it doesn't have the title to them either. But provided it has permission from the owners of the lot, Next Era says it can start moving the blades by October fifth, either to a more suitable weigh station in Kansas or to recycling facility in Missouri. The Public Utilities Commission finally ordered that the more than one hundred blades must be removed by December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Now, if you got lost in the ownership of the blades in the wind farm, you were supposed to. This is the kind of games these companies play, thus to not be held responsible. Going out of business, selling ownership, changing names. It took an order of the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission to end the finger pointing and butt passing between the wind farm developer Next Era and the local electric utility, Excel Energy. So after years of waiting and wondering what was going to happen to the pile of wind turbine blades on the edge of town, the city of Grand Meadow is finally getting cleaned up as work crews haul the blades out of town. As stated earlier, Next Era told the Public Utilities Commission it would move them to a more suitable storage site in Kansas or a recycling facility in Missouri. Update, K A A L, TV, and Rochester reports, they are headed here to Iowa to a recycler. We ask you, the supervisors, that any ordinance written for wind turbines in Jackson County must require no storage of blades or any other waste in this county. In addition, the blades shall not be cut up in the field due to the risk of fiberglass spewing over property and a stiff penalty of five thousand dollars per day, per blade, after ten days should be part of the ordinance. Thank you.
Next, Melissa Warren.
Again, I will ask you to hold your applause after someone finishes, finishes speaking so that we can continue to have speakers move along.
Um, Alyssa Roar, a Jackson County resident. Um, a couple of concerns I would like to bring up. Um, the current draft allows for thirty hours a year of shadow flicker on a non-participating landowner's home. Um, if I have more than thirty hours a year of shadow flicker on my house, how am I able, how am I going to prove that? And do I have to video thirty hours of shadow flicker to prove that it's more, who is going to enforce this? And what will the penalty be? Uh, the current draft is an unrealistic, um, right up right now, and I would like to see zero hours of shadow flicker on any non-participating, um, property dwelling. Uh, if you're going to allow, um, thirty hours or even five minutes a year of shadow flicker on my home, then you are not protecting my property rights as a landowner. And the second, um, point I'd like to bring up in regards to setback is the current draft um, has a little over a quarter mile, um, of setbacks from the property lines. The setback distance is not near far enough. Um, we have local residents who work on wind turbine sites and they are required to be over half a mile away during emergency situations for um, the wind energy company. And I would like to see a three mile setback from property lines, um, because a quarter mile does not seem far enough for anybody's safety.
Thank you. Next, Marty Morell.
Hi, it's Marty Morell. I live, uh, Royal Shalana, Highway one thirty-six. There are wind turbine easements on two sides of my acreage. I have about five points I want to make. A couple of Marty would address, so I'll skip them or make it brief. I wanted to share a story with you. And over Labor Day weekend, I was in Southern Story County. And there were turbines in that area and I started knocking on doors. And I found this local farmer that had a turbine basically in his backyard. It was his ground, it was his turbine. And I asked him one question and he talked to me for a half hour. Uh, during that conversation outdoors, you could hear the turbine going the whole time. Now, what I find interesting about this is twofold, is my big beef about these turbines since day one has been the amount of concrete that go in the ground. So he's got a five hundred foot turbine and under the Story County ordinance, that means it doesn't need to have a red warning light on it. With that five hundred foot turbine, he has eighteen feet of concrete under that turbine. And upon decommissioning, they have to remove ten feet. Why are we only talking about four? Please address that. Uh, the second thing, as you mentioned, shadow flicker, I'll just note, there is technology to eliminate shadow flicker. It's GPS technology, it's there and it's available, and zero flicker is better than any flicker. And if you didn't hear the. And if you didn't hear the whispers in the room when you talk about setbacks, what it is, is everybody's asking for a three-mile setback in property lines. Thank you.
Wait.
It's please hold your applause.
I have been a certified state of Iowa well contractor since the beginning of the certification, 25 years, and have been working with wells, sapping, and plumbing for 37 years in Clinton and Jackson Counties. The unique geological landforms in our area warn us caution due to the karst rock in our area. In my extensive experience, I have seen wells up to two miles away from rockways have problems due to blasting and vibration. This can lead to necessity of drilling a new well. Weighted equipment and the turbines themselves pose a massive threat to our water supply considering the area has easily dissolved bedrock near the ground surface. Wind turbines would not only put a large number of wells at risk, but also the risk of damaging our groundwater supply. I'm concerned about my own well as well as many other wells that are within the proposed project. Using my own well, for example, have a shallow bedrock well that is 16 feet to bedrock would be at risk. Wind turbine bases would go deep into the bedrock, allowing contaminants to go through the shallow rock. Another concern is oil leaking out of the turbine and contaminating groundwater. Wells are sealed with betonite, so this does not happen. However, the base of a turbine would not be sealed like this. Loose rock around the base is a serious problem. The removal of topsoil for the project would also take the natural filtering process away from the water. I've contacted Iowa Geological Survey about my concerns. Received an email from Greg Brennan, Hydrogeologist in the map of our area. There is a fault line that runs out of Clinton County into Jackson County. Mine rock in many of these wells south of the Plum River Fault Line is a slurry in age bedrock which forms a primary local and regional aquifer. The aquifer is permeable, allowing for the subpurpose flow of groundwater. Ease of flows varies in a horizontal and vertical degree by occurrence of interconnected fractures, joints embedded in the rock. Due to the fault line, the rock is uplifted, which causes abrupt changes in map geology and may result in greater aquifer permeability. Divis into this fault line. He stated that my concerns are justified due to the shallow nature of the bedrock. I have identified 37 wells, which I have marked with a black dot on the map. I'm using this as a sample section. And many, depending on the location of the site, there would be many additional wells of concern. The area that I have already identified would include approximately 90 people and a large amount of lice off. My professional recommendation as a well contractor is that a project like this should not be placed on our unique geological situation. Jackson County is 100% karst. Karst refers to the geological landforms characterized by the presence of easily dissolved bedrock near the ground surface.
Tim Smith.
Oh, Kim Sheen. I'm a landowner north of, north of Andrew. I was talking with Jim and doing a little research of my own. I was very concerned about the safety of our water. If you allow turbines to put up in Jackson County, it's really, it is 100% karst rock. For those of you who aren't familiar with the karst rock, you can get an idea by driving through a construction project where they sort of roll through and you get the layers of limestone. That's karst. And so if you look at the, if you go online, and if you go through the Jackson County Environmental, it also ties into the Iowa DNR, and they will map you. They'll show you the maps and diagrams of how the aquifer is run through the karst. And if you disrupt those layers, that's how ground contamination happens so easily in a rocky area like Jackson County. Because everything's striated and if you, and if you break that, then you, then you disturb that, those striations and that's how you can lose your aquifer and how you get groundwater penetration and all sorts of contaminants. You know, a lot of us came of age during the eighties when we used field sprays pretty indiscriminately back in the early eighties. And, and then we figured out that this didn't take a whole lot of that before we're sending it out to Mississippi too. And we wondered how that could possibly happen. Well, that's, that's karst. And it's something that's really critical. You know, my, my well is at 660 feet to wet. My next-door neighbor is, he's 100 yards away and he's going 350 feet. And that's just the difference between where those, where the aquifers are, 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 they're arbitrary. It's pretty capricious. You don't know when you're going to hit water. You put a fire, you put a 400-foot tower on top of that, on top of that, those striations. You gotta wonder what's going to happen to it, especially when you, when you think about the vibrations. The, you know, the county independently needs to run baseline tests in all those wells within four miles of a fault line. The Plum River Fault Line is what Jim was talking about. And if you look where that runs and what the, what the environment does, when you, when you, if you especially put any number of wind towers up, you probably have a problem there. I don't know for sure. I haven't run the study myself. But again, if you, if you look online at karst, K-A-R-S-T, and really educate yourself on that subject alone, I think it's a huge pause for caution. Thanks.
Ron Bash.
Hello and good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. I'm Ron Bash. I'm from Clinton County, though I have strong ties to Jackson County with family members and also with my wife's employment up here and for myself from a commerce standpoint. So I do want to talk a little bit about the, the sleep disturbances that are happening with sound in that. I'm a doctor of chiropractic for clinical practice for 34 years. Have a neurology background, compliance background, and evidence-based clinical practice background. I'm not going to get into all the physics of sound, but as we look at sound, and some of you are well aware, that we have audible sound, which is between 20 Hz and 20,000 Hz. That's typically measured in decibels and it's measured in decibels weighted by eight, which is what you were talking about in your ordinances here, which is really good when we're working with that. But when we're working with the part of sound that actually can be more detrimental to the human, which is infrasound, which is below 20 Hz, 1 to 19 Hz, that actually is better measured with decibels in the C-weighted range. So when you start putting in decibels, saying like 48 decibels, A, 35 decibel A's, you're really missing a whole spectrum of sound that actually affects the body. And if we look at the literature that's out there by Bausner, by, over University of Washington, how it affects the inner ear, it does cause a lot of sleep disturbance. Obviously audible sound, it's easy to determine why that's causing sleep disturbance. But the infrasound causes that sleep disturbance. And as we know from WHO and from other sources such as Ben Johnson, Dr. Ben Johnson, a cardiologist over in Iowa, a retired cardiologist over in Iowa City, that sleep disturbances can cause cardiovascular problems, can cause obesity, can lead to prediabetes or diabetes, and all sorts of other type of things that will cause problems for the human body as we move and get older and move on. The thing that we have to realize on that, it's about dose response. So as these, as these wind turbines come in, and the longer they're there, the longer you're exposed to it, the more compounding damage you're doing to your body. So when you're looking at your ordinances, please take that into effect when it comes to setting those sound levels. And then as we look at other mitigation factors such as setback, there's many of you here have been speaking about the three-mile setback, which would be a minimum to be looking at. Maximum, these infrasounds can go up eight. And all you have to do is look at NASA. They did research back in the 1980s that actually documents all this with 600-foot towers. How it goes out well over 10 kilometers. So you know this infrasound's going out further and further. And depending on the weather conditions, the humidity and that, it can, humidity, it can actually make it go further. And when it gets into a house, and like I said, we're not getting into the physics of it, but we'll just talk that it can get even louder in the house.
Again, please do hold your applause. We can keep everybody moving.
Dori Venema.
My name is Dori Venema. My family lives between Miles and Sevula, and we are surrounded by signed easement options. First, I want to thank the zoning commission for your hard work on this ordinance. You have made considerable progress towards an ordinance that protects all Jackson County landowners. I do think, however, there are some areas that can be improved. First, 30 hours per year of shadow flicker on a non-participating property is completely unacceptable. Operational payment should be used to keep this number at zero hours. Second, noise must be measured from peak levels. Much of the noise from a wind turbine is pulsating. If your measurement is an average, it will allow significantly higher peak levels. This would be like driving 100 miles per hour down the interstate and stopping once per hour to lower your average. Next Era will tell you 50 decibels is equivalent to a quiet conversation. I don't know about any of you, but I would not be comfortable with a quiet conversation taking place outside of my bedroom window every single night. Number three, I would like to see cemeteries have a setback of at least two miles. Fourth, I would like you to honor the setback resolutions currently being voted in by multiple city councils in the county. Fifth, I found some interesting information in a safety manual from a large wind turbine manufacturer. This manual states, the wind turbine is at high risk from lightning strikes. The wind turbine itself is adequately protected against damage by comprehensive lightning protection measures. Personally, I've seen pictures that show very differently from that. The manual continues with saying persons inside or in the proximity of a wind turbine are still at risk. Wind turbine workers need to stop all work, descend to the tower base, leave and lock the wind turbine, leave the wind farm, wait in a vehicle at a safe distance from the wind turbine, approximately 3,280 feet until the thunderstorm has passed. Wait one hour after the thunderstorm has passed before entering the wind turbine. I am asking that the property line setback be increased to 3,280 feet so the citizens of Jackson County are as protected as the wind turbine workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Bartle.
Hello, Mary Colleen Bartle. I am a resident of Jackson County and also a farm owner in Clinton and Jackson County. First, I encourage everyone to consider what you are leaving the next generation. I want to thank the board of supervisors for being part of this discussion, the zoning board for the hard work that you put in, and also John for being present, Jackson County attorney. I want you to hear the same information because in the end, you will be the final decision-maker. Landowners have the authority and are able to make their own choices as to what happens on their property and that authority stops at their property line. The easements that are filed online that our neighbors have signed state the following. Page two, item six, effects easements. Owner grants to operator an easement for sound, noise, visual view, lights, flickers, shadow vibration, air turbulence wake, electromagnetic, electrical and radio frequency interference, and any other effects attributable to the land, to the wind farm or activity located on the owner's property or an adjacent property over and across the owner's property. These are real. You hear people saying these are not real. You're making it up. These are real or they would not be listed on a legal document. So I'm asking protection from these things. I'd like you to increase the setback to be three miles. And I further ask again, protection from everything that I just mentioned. Because I have not signed an agreement. I don't want this on my property. So I shouldn't have to affect, I shouldn't have to experience any of these effects. Also, when considering dealing with Next Era, this particular company is listed on violation tracker website and it does have a summary posted about them. I question their ethics and want you to know that this is a snapshot of how this company does business. Please keep in mind, actions speak louder than words. Next Era Energy is listed as having the following penalty. Since the year 2000, totally $30 million, $475, or $475, $409. This is copied directly from that webpage. $25 million for competitive offenses. $2.6 million for environmental-related offenses. $2.3 million for employee-related offenses. $420,000 for safety-related offenses and $106,000 for consumer protection-related offenses. So keep in mind, actions are speaking louder than words when it comes to this company.
Brian McLeod or, okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian. I don't know if there's any other mill people here, but I just have a question for you guys. I want to know, has anybody thought when the new administration comes in, this whole Green New Deal thing goes away, it's a big giant forest. All these companies that are coming in, they're dependent, government subsidies to make a profit. The hell are you, what's going to happen? All these people have all the big stupid windows on their front. Who's going to take, who's going to be responsible? These guys are going to walk away, wash their hands. Nope, we're banter. Not out for help. I just want to know, what do you wish out of that?
Bill Gantler.
Yes, Bill Gantler, Jackson County resident and property owner. And as I'm calling the pardons here both, both ways. One concern I have is, as mentioned, if some of these companies do go bankrupt, do they have a surety bond that continues for more than just three years? Because if they do not have a surety bond and that extends further than that, we as taxpayers will eventually be taking up the, the bill to decommission those sites. And they don't want to be part of that. Thank you.
Richard Scher.
Hey, I'm, I'm with the Jackson County Pioneer Cemetery Commission. And this topic was brought up to our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. As far as having a setback from Pioneer Cemeteries. We're responsible for 25 cemeteries throughout the county for maintenance and upkeep. There's also a lot of country cemeteries that are currently in use. But just, we just, we did come up, we did not come up with a resolution as far as setbacks. The general consensus was that there should be some sort of setbacks to the cemetery. So there's something more to think about.
Next, Christine Ball.
Hi, my name's Christine Ball. I had a few questions tonight, but most of you have answered all of them, so I'll be pretty short. Only things that I've heard tonight for wind turbines are for farm owners' rents. Well, I'm a property owner in Jackson County and I also own farm ground in Jackson County that I rent out. So I am that property owner. And I guess when I, I was curious, how come the DNR hasn't put out any statements or talked about the well? Like this area, we promote tourism. We have all the waterways. We have the, you know, the caves. I just hadn't heard anything from the DNR. I didn't know if they were interested. And there is a fine for wildlife, like for example, if I were to shoot an eagle or a turkey vulture or something. Is there going to be a fine for all the wildlife that's killed by the turbines? And then I just asked, it's such an important thing and our county attorney has even said, he doesn't specialize in this. We've all put so much work into it. But these companies are multi-million or billion dollars. They have whole firms of attorneys working for them. Can the county not take their time and maybe hire some people to maybe write this a little bit more foolproof so that we're not, as a taxpayer, I don't want to be responsible for removing those? And also as a landowner, yes, I have rights, but I don't believe that I own everybody's view for miles and miles. I mean, this is just something that we're deciding on for now. It's going to be for my kids' future also. So is there, I guess, I'm asked, is there a timeline for this? Can we, can we slow down and get some more professionals involved? Maybe some attorneys that just deal with this? Would the county be willing? Maybe some attorneys that just deal with this? Would the county be willing to do that?
Thank you. Uh, Monica, we had, you want to pose a question? Did we? Oh, I'm so sorry. What was your name? Hi, I apologize. I don't even see where I had you. Oh, I know, you must, I believe you. Oh, there you are. Your ICU danger zone is what your topic is.
Yes, I am. In a view of the draft of your ordinances, I would strongly encourage you to have stronger setbacks from towns, highways, homes, public facilities, cemeteries, and historical sites. In addition, I would suggest at least three miles from neighbor's property and six times turbine height from home highways. Please consider these real-life situations as you make decisions. In two thousand eighteen, a scythe by at Mount Wushu's College Performing Arts Center in Massachusetts was shattered when an enormous chunk of ice flew off a three-hundred-foot turbine. Now, that turbine had an ice accumulation detection system, which was supposed to trigger a shutdown when heavy ice was detected and the blades would be stopped. But the safety mechanism failed to work. Fortunately, no one was hurt. Also in two thousand eighteen in Minnesota, a semi-trailer was damaged when a large chunk of ice flew off a turbine that was just three hundred feet from the road. The driver survived the ice throw, but noted that a person in a smaller vehicle might not have fared as well, and a pedestrian would have little hope. Adair County, Iowa, October twenty twenty-three, a four hundred ninety-two-foot turbine caught fire. That fire spread one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five feet. That is three point five times the turbine height. They were fortunate that the crops had just been harvested. Conditions like we have right now would have been a much bigger disaster. March twenty twenty-three, lightning strikes the turbine at the Wheat's Farm in Mechanicsville, Iowa, and spreads debris over a large area. Before a full cleanup, lightning strikes again at a turbine on the Wheat's Farm in May of this year. This time, there is millions of dollars of damage and fiberglass skewed from the three-hundred-foot turbine over two miles. Just last February twenty twenty-four, Osceola County, Iowa, a small two hundred and twenty-five-foot turbine suffered blade failure. The turbine launched fragments of its blades up to nine hundred and sixty feet. That is four point two seven times the turbine's height. These were large, sharp projectiles that easily could have killed a person. Twelve pieces ranging from a few feet in size to over twenty-three feet in length impaled the ground. One piece, which was five foot long, threw three point seven times the height of the turbine. This incident happened with winds at thirty-three miles per hour. The piece that flew four point two seven times the turbine height could have traveled much farther in a high-wind event. Direct injury or death from ice, blade throw, fire is a real danger. I strongly encourage at least three miles from property line and six times turbine height from the highway to protect your citizens from the danger zone. You need to protect farmers rooting in their fields, kids playing in their yards, and livestock grazing in the pastures. The citizens of the county are far more important than the interests of an out-of-state billion-dollar company.
And if you want to hear anything about that, I want to receive.
This is from Ryan Schnitz. From a biological perspective, Jackson County should maintain a moratorium on wind farms. The Mississippi River is the largest migratory corridor in North America. Through my satellite tracking data, bald eagles have been documented migrating sixty miles west of the Mississippi River as they cut the corner from Dubuque to the Quad Cities.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, Dan, we won't let you make a comment.
I've been talking with Lori Rolling, uh, the past month or so about including fire suppression, fire detection systems, and make ensuring lightning protection on the windows, and that's something I'd like to see included in this ordinance.
Do we have any board discussion on any of the issues that were brought up tonight? Do you want me to go through some of the topics? Or not? Other things were brought up?
Yes, I, I know one thing that, that, um, was brought up tonight that made me think that we need to add something else was the, uh, storing of the, of the, yeah, of the blades, the discarded blades. Um, I know that has been an issue in the state of Iowa, there was another article that was passed along to me, concerning, uh, the old Maytag site in Newton, another one in Fort Dodge, and there was one other place, um, that was fine. And I think that's something that we should consider adding if anybody has a motion or would like to add that.
There's a lot of ordinances out there, I can't remember any, but there might be some, but I can't tell you whose are what. Um, we, if you did make a change or an addition, we probably wanna do it under discontinuation catastrophic failure or the decommissioning part. John, can you give us something?
Which had a paragraph?
I think, I think we need some, please, because I don't feel comfortable yet proceeding tonight in this, I haven't agreed yet.
So the board has been having discussions, I know that hasn't been open, or we haven't been on mic. Um, there are several things that were brought up tonight that we would like to add or at least have discussions on and add to the ordinance. So we will not send it to the board tonight, uh, but we will have one more meeting on this um, and add some more things into the ordinance that, especially with some of the things that were presented tonight.
Monica, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
I have a couple of concerns of the ordinance myself. Um, section, section three, number eighteen says that the Board of Adjustment can give a variance. I'm a little concerned that if, I don't know who would be on the board in these variants at any certain time, that they can give any type of variance?
No, there's things that they have to follow with that. Um, so it's not an all-out, uh, whatever change they want, um, that's not necessarily how it happens with the Board of Adjustments. There are things, and Lori, you might be able to help out on that, that they can approve, but they do not have to.
Some of the things that we've talked about are waivers for setbacks or sound for, from a new J property owner. Um, and another thing, maybe if they ask for a waiver on height. So the way our current ordinance is set up for a Board of, Board of Adjustment request is, um, I'm gonna use it for height here, just because I can make it work, uh, the math's easy. Um, so right now we have a four hundred-foot tower limitation. So if there was anything less than fifty percent quantitative, so if they were asking for five ninety-eight and not six hundred, because it's five ninety-eight is less than fifty percent of a, of a greater ask, they could ask that. Does the Board of Adjustment have to grant that variance? No.
That's my question. That said, they could ask for a three hundred-foot tall or whatever, but you could give the variance. They could, whoever may be on the Board of Adjustment, could give a variance for a six hundred and fifty-foot tall.
Well, that's outside of that quantitative. So if it's a four hundred-foot height restriction, they cannot give more than fifty percent. So they can't more than double it. So they would not, they would ask for a six hundred-foot. That would have to be less than six hundred feet because that's four hundred plus half is six hundred. So it has to be less than that fifty percent.
And the tur, most turbines today are six hundred feet or, or more. Uh, four hundred feet is not something that wind turbine companies would generally put up because they're too small.
And think of this too, Mike, um, we have public hearings that, so any, any variance would have to go before the Board of Adjustment. Every neighbor within the prescribed area that this would be going into would be notified. It would be a public notice in the newspaper. Um, it, it probably wouldn't be worth the effort of asking for a variance.
The only other thing I, I heard, um, some ice that was thrown X amount of feet onto a roadway. Is there anything in any of our ordinance that we read, I have not seen it, about blade speed? I was astonished when I found out the blade speed of some of these turbines.
That blade speed is something that we have not discussed. We haven't had anybody, have any, I don't think we've even had any emails on blade speed, have we Lori? I've read so many emails, I can't.
Um, not asking for restriction, only pointing out the fact that even though they're only moving at this speed, but if you take that times the diameter, it's like how many hundred miles an hour that the wind that's actually turning, I mean, if you take the diameter.
Well, that's, the average is between eighty and a hundred maybe. Well, I was told that they can get up to two hundred miles an hour at the tip.
I also have one other thing I would like us to consider when we are looking at these setbacks. Whatever they end up being. So let's say we're doing the four hundred and we're doing the fifteen. You know, that's three point whatever times the height of the windmill. I think we need to have that kind of number figure in there that whichever is greater type of deal in case somewhere along the lines that four hundred does get changed to a six hundred-foot ordinance or, you know. I just think whichever is greater would be a good thing to have in there. I think we already do have that one in there, Dan. Did we take that out? I don't think we did.
Yep, we have. It's, um, it's period, the, the height. And there, well, excuse me, it's period the fifteen hundred feet. If there's no, no times height in there, it's just fifteen hundred foot setback. So that would have to be added, if that was something.
Yeah.
Like one height to the tower, is it the one point one height to the tower or whatever?
Well, that's, that's what we did originally, but we took that, that time, that's better.
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had it originally, and we changed it to fifteen hundred feet on that.
But right now, if you're using the four hundred feet height and fifteen hundred feet, you're like, what is it, three point seven five times the height?
Well, yeah, so, so, so taking into consideration four hundred-foot tower, we're underneath even the three times, that's the reason we took off, took out the, you know, the multiplier on the height of the tower. But I suppose we could put something in there if you're concerned about the Board of Adjustment allowing a, a tower to get taller.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm heading with that, is just in case there is a variation put in there that we're protecting that other property owner.
If it is six hundred, that's two point five.
So what are some of the other things that we want staff to look at to add into, um, the ordinance?
I want, I want to revisit the four-foot depth for decommissioning. I, I just said I wanted to revisit the four-foot depth for recom, uh, decommissioning. I had blade storage down. Um, the, uh, the Plum River Falls and the water issues were a concern of mine. Um, we've talked about sound before and shadow flicker, we want to make sure we got that covered, those are two that I wrote down, um.
Shadow flicker and what?
And, um, asleep is the service sound. I had written down whether or not we should re, uh, at least have a discussion on, um, if we're all comfortable with the setback as we've currently got it. Um, the cemeteries, uh, maybe we should have something in there about the cemetery setback. And the highs, yeah. I'd like some more, um, information on ice throw. Anybody else?
Why highways, why wouldn't it be roads?
Roads, highways.
I mean, even gravel, anything, not just major highways.
Roadways.
Roads.
With the roadways and, and I think with some of them, um, I think we probably need to look at traffic counts too with the, with the roadways.
Traffic comes easy to get for you. Monica?
Yeah, the fire protection, the fire suppression, we need to look at that too and see what we've got on that.
Blade speed, will that make a difference? Do you have any fire numbers on that actually?
Sandra, you want to repeat that?
The mic made it down.
Hey, look at the blade speed, does it make a difference on the height of the, of the turbine? And can we get some, um, evidence as to, is it eighty to a hundred or is it two hundred?
Yeah, and is, is it variable? I mean, is there? Um, I, I'm pretty sure that I had heard that, uh, two hundred, uh, figure on a, like a six hundred-foot tower. So I guess my question would be is, um, does blade speed alternate with different sizes and powers? And can it be adjusted?
Is there anything else that the board would like to add for discuss?
the board would like to add for discuss?
They're going to hit you up about substations and, uh, battery storage in the future too. So you're going to put that into.
That, that is a separate subject. That will be in a separate ordinance. So right now, this is just working, board discussion. The public hearing has been closed.
Um, can I just add something just to, to point out? Um, we have a moratorium in place right now for any applications for permits on not only the utility scale when we have it in place for battery storage, solar, and one other unrelated.
So we're going to give.
We're, it's on the list. This, um, this ordinance itself has extended out probably, well, a lot longer than we anticipated. Um, we had plans on starting the other ordinances, um, before the battery storage and the utility scale solar. Um, we've actually had to extend those moratoriums because we were planning on having those ordinances written by October fourth. And so that they were, they've been extended to the end of June. Um, we kind of have a, a solid date for everything at this point. But it's, nothing can move forward.
Yeah, we, we need to get this one done. And I know there were two comments from the audience tonight that I would kind of like to address. One is, um, about the, uh, DNR Department of Natural Resources. Um, we've asked the DNR to come forward, uh, and they have been told by their offices in Des Moines that this is a very volatile, or I think that was the word that was used. I'm not, I'm not sure. So something like very contentious and that they should not show up. Um, I know the second issue was brought up about, um, and, and we did discuss this at one of, at the last meeting that we had that was open to the public, when people talked about, um, not being informed of what goes on. And I apologize to the newspaper that is here tonight. Um, but what I will say is that, um, the Iowa Public Information Board proposed legislation last year to change, um, the law on where public entities publish their public notices. Um, what I will say is that a lot of websites today do publish, or a lot of, a lot of government, um, entities do publish on their websites, but officially, according to the law, it has to be published in the newspapers. And although I am a subscriber to the newspaper, um, I will tell you that, uh, and I think the newspaper will tell you that readership is down. Um, but I do know that the county pays a lot of money because public notices still have to be reported in the newspapers. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. They will publish in the newspapers. They're not required to do it on the website, although Jackson County has decided to put it on the website. And it is a frustration that the law still requires the publication in the newspapers. Um, and I know there, I think there's one other website that they can be published on. I have to, I have to remember because I can't think what the name of it is. So that is a frustration for many government boards and things like that, is that it is required to be put in the newspaper and readership is down and you're not being informed of it. So there's two ways to do this. You can subscribe to the newspaper to get the information. Um, but I will tell you that, um, the boards, the Jackson County boards have been very good about putting it on the websites. So make sure you look at the JacksonCounty.Iowa.gov. Is that what the, okay, website? Um, to look at these things. The other thing is, um, the, we have been putting out this ordinance on the website and it's in a draft form. I can tell you that the law does not require us to put out a draft. Um, but because this is contentious, and I think that's something that we will probably continue to do to keep people informed. Um, but just know it's not required by law. Um, but we are putting it out there to try and be as transparent as possible. We are, we are a board of volunteers. None of us gets paid for this. Um, I don't think I've been to so many zoning board meetings in my entire tenure. Uh, and some of them have gone marathon lengths because of all of the issues that we've been coming up with. I was hoping tonight to be able to send this to the board of supervisors. I'm disappointed we weren't able to. Uh, but we do need another meeting to kind of clear some things up.
Do you want to set the next meeting?
Yes, the next meeting, um, will be November, it's the third. Yeah, the eighteenth of, what, you're going to be out of town again? Um, November eighteenth, um, at six P M. Um, we're going to do it to be determined where, um, I think we may have it at the courthouse, but we need to kind of talk about that, Lori.
My, to make it work in the courtroom?
Yeah.
It's not great.
It's not great.
Capabilities are horrible though. We can, let's try to see if we can do better.
Yeah, well, we'll see if we can do that. So we will do that. Um, does the board have any other comments? Monica, can I make some comments before you guys wrap up? Um, one, I guess I would like you to kind of really consider that four-foot decommission. I would like to see that greater because one.
That's, we already put that on the list.
Okay, okay. And then, um, I did email Lori the information about, from the Clinton Municipal Airport on what kind of they have, and I guess I would like some people to look through that and consider that a little bit more than just what the FAA has recommended because of my past meetings I went to, so. So Lori does have that if anybody wants it emailed out to them.
They get it. They get it forward to them, whether they want it or not.
Also, yeah, you do get it.
It's automatic.
Yes, all the, all the emails and, and concerns that everybody has that are sent to Lori, we get them. I, I can prove that with the hundreds of emails that we all have in our, in our email. Um, all right, if there isn't any other further comments, I will ask for a motion in a second to, um, adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, I have a motion second. Is there any other discussion? If not, go for a vote. All in favor of adjourn the meeting?
If you would. Let's give a thank you to Lori and back to Monica and the whole commission for the work they've done. This is unforgiving. And like Monica says, the pay's not real well, so, uh, let's appreciate what they're doing for us.